I'd like to call this Board of Aldermen meeting to order. Could we all please stand to the pledge? Alderman Casserly will lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're down to item number three, approval of minutes, work session, meeting minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the work session, meeting minutes from November 18th, 2014. Second?
I have a motion by Alderman Casserly, second by Alderman Holly, to approve the minutes. Will call vote?
Alderman Dryer?
Abstained, I wasn't here.
Alderman Schluter?
Abstained due to absence.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock is absent. Alderman Clark?
Yes. Three, four, two abstained, one absent. Motion passed. Regular board meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from November 18th, 2014. Second?
Motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Casserly, to approve the regular board meeting minutes from November 18th, 2014. Any discussion? Will call vote?
Alderman Schluter?
Abstained due to...
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Abstained, I wasn't here.
Motion passed. Three, four, none against, and two abstained, and one absent. Item number four, hearing from the public. This time we give anybody five minutes to talk. Come on up, state your name for the record.
I'm Stan Shelton, Board of Aldermen. I just wanted to come to say a few words. Last few weeks or so have read in the paper that financially the city is doing very well. And you have a bond rating of an A or very good. I'd like to remind the Board, earlier this year you had a vote to put a new overpass in, that you guys hand-selected 10 people to vote on it, and you didn't get one vote. And the way I understand, that cost total amount to bring all that together and to have a vote on it was about $100,000. If I'm wrong with that figure, please tell me, but that's what I had heard. So, that was, you'd saved $75,000 from refinancing a loan, so if you spent $100,000 on that vote, you're still in the hole. The other thing I would want to bring up, and I wanted to do this earlier but just hadn't had the opportunity. Back in August, you had an executive session to talk about personnel, August 19th to be a matter of fact. And in that meeting, you were discussing Jim Dryer turning in an application for a job with the city. And the way I understand the sunshine law, personnel, that's good for an executive session. But if you read your minutes, it was really on the borderline of being legal. And then at the very end, to me, you broke the sunshine law when you voted to pass a ordinance to not allow an elected official or setting official to apply for that job, or for any job within the city. And somebody brought up, one of the Aldermen brought up, because Jim had voted on that motion, was that legal, or can he vote on it? And your legal counsel said, yeah, because it wasn't pertaining to him, it was pertaining to everybody. I'm no lawyer, but to me, that sounds like policy. And if that's policy, that should've been in an open meeting. The vote should've never happened. You should've stopped the meeting then and said, we can't take a vote, that's policy. But you went ahead with the vote, and you did make this public, your minutes. The question I would have, how many times do you break the law when we don't see the minutes? The only reason we know about this is because the minutes were published. So is there other things that gets discussed in executive session that shouldn't be? And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak? Hearing none, we extend the same to our Aldermen.
I would like to speak, actually. I didn't have anything to say, until Mr. Shelton decided that he wanted to address the Board. I would like to point out to the public who will see this tomorrow morning, that Mr. Shelton never seems to have much of anything positive to say about this city. And that really irritates me, because this city runs very good, and they run very well, and they pay attention to that law as much as they can to make sure no mistakes are made. And it really irritates me that every time Mr. Shelton comes to this Board, he has a problem with the city, when this city is well-run. That $100,000 that was spent, you have to spend money to run a city. And that was spent with the intent, and those voters that were elected, not elected, but chosen due to the Boarders, were chosen legally by the state process and how that process was designed. So, if the city actually is doing something bad, I can tell you, these people up here on the Board are going to address it, because we live in this city limits, and it's important to us. So don't keep coming to the city with all these negatives without having a positive. Thank you.
Anybody on the side of the Board?
I'll kind of piggyback that and just say, you know, Shelton, by all means, I know my program is available, and we do live in my Board. If there's any issues that you do see that have arisen, by all means, you're more than free to call me. I do get phone calls on a daily basis. I don't mind discussing things with you that we can discuss. But our counsel's very meticulous, and I know some people may want to buy into rumors and conjectures of what people say, but he's very meticulous on what we can and can't do, and he has stopped us in meetings before, when we've maybe crossed a threshold. So, you know, my trust is in him, that he's doing a good job. But I think the people's trust, since they voted us in, should be with us too, because I know I do my homework, and I know other people on this Board have done our homework, reading the law and updating the law. Do we come close sometimes? Sure. We're not infallible, but I believe you see that we're probably one of the more transparent Boards there has been lately, and we'll come back and tell you if we're wrong and we'll correct it. And I hope that you can have faith in that we are doing that. But by all means, call if you have issues. I don't mind discussing with you, I'm not shutting you or shutting you out, I'll listen.
Anybody else have anything?
I just have one small item. This Friday is hometown Christmas, and I'm out to repeat my chili cook-off first place. We're on Jerry's team, and because the past Mayor and I did it last year, and I was wanting to do it again for him. So, I hope everybody comes. There's going to be a lot of things up and down Main Street. The City Hall's going to have a lot of stuff. I don't know if there's anything on the docket that you're going to talk about, but there's going to be things given away, all up and down Main Street. Some really nice prizes are being given, are giveaways from the city. So, please come down and visit our good city. Okay, let's go down to item number six. Joy Howard.
I'm here to talk to you about the final bond sale, which is on your agenda as item number 12, is the ordinance. And I'm here alone this evening, the bond attorneys aren't with me, so if you have questions regarding the ordinance, you should direct those to me, and hopefully I'll be able to answer any questions you have. As far as the sale results, you'll recall that the last time I was here, we selected the underwriter, and the selection was Stiefel Nickless, and they had offered at that time a true interest cost, which is a combined measure of underwriting fees and rates, 3.323%. But that was not a firm final rate, it was indexed, and it could go up or it could go down according to market conditions. So now you get the good news and the bad news. The bad news is that almost immediately after the proposals came in, interest rates went up quite a bit for that whole seven-day period, quite a lot. They've actually started coming back down a bit now. But one of the options that they offered in their proposal was to purchase bond insurance, which took your rating from an A-plus to a double A, and would reduce the interest rate by 10 basis points, more or less, 0.1%, and give you a savings of about $100,000. The cost of it was very small, it's only about $17,000. The $100,000 I'm mentioning is net of that cost. So we did decide to go ahead and get the insurance that's reflected in the ordinance that's in front of you, and it brought the interest rate back down to a final rate. The final rate tonight, we don't have to worry about rates anymore, is basically 3.33%. So even though interest rates went up by buying you, buying the insurance, we went back down to where we were at, at the time of the proposal. We had, working with your staff, with Terry and Gabriel, I hope it's okay to use first names, we had decided to get the bonds bank-qualified. We've talked about that before, that gives you an interest rate advantage, it makes the bonds more attractive to banks. And to do that, normally, we can't have proceeds of more than $10 million because of your refinancing. For a lot of technical reasons, we couldn't have proceeds of more than $9,980,000. But we wanted to give you as much of your authorized issue as possible, but still have it bank-qualified, and you'll do more in the future, five or 10 years from now, the remaining authorized issue. The other parameter we had is we wanted to keep the annual debt service below $600,000. So it was going to kind of be juggling to see, okay, where do we end up based on interest rates? Well, fortunately, we were able to go all the way up to your maximum amount that you could have to get the $9,980,000 proceeds, which equates, by the way, to the principal you're seeing in the ordinance, which is, this is a lot to cover, $9,910,000. The underwriters paying you an additional, more or less, $70,000 as a premium. The annual debt service is, it varies from year to year, but it's approximately $585,000. So the bottom line is that we were able to deliver the maximum amount you could get at bank-qualified, and still be under the $600,000, because rates are still super wonderful. The timing is great. I can't tell you how much longer interest rates have stayed as low. They've been low now for around two to three years, everybody's been saying they're going to go up, and they haven't, but in any event, we were, you know, lucky that you could still take advantage of these super-low rates. And that's all I have to say, and that was quite a bit. So if you have questions, I completely understand.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay, I will be here through your ordinance ratings, so if you change your mind and have questions, I'll be here.
Okay. Item number seven, Nancy Terry Thorne, Director of Operations.
My first item for you this evening is an addendum to the Game Time use and league management agreement. The partners at Game Time, which are Todd Hamlet and Rob Worston-Holm, have decided to split the company. Todd Hamlet has been the person who has been involved with us out here since the onset of our partnership with them, and Rob had primarily handled the part of their business that was in St. Louis City. So what they've done is split that up, created, Todd has created a new company called Tournament Sports Management with a new partner, Michael Dare, and Chris has drawn up the two agreements that you see later on in ordinance as addendums to the agreements we originally had. The only thing that's changing is just to reflect this new LLC that was formed. All of the other terms of the agreement are exactly as they were. So, also wanted to provide a little summary, which is part of what's required of Game Time in the agreement, and I think you have that in the information that was out on your Dropbox. But for purposes of the public, looking at the number of softball, baseball, and T-ball participants from 2013 to 2014, stayed basically the same. There were five more in 2014 than 2013. Soccer registrations were down about 60 from 2013 to 2014. Spring adult softball was down two teams from '13 to '14. The new added feature, adult fall ball registrations, we had none in 2013 because it wasn't offered, but they had five teams participate in that in 2014. We also had eight tournaments that averaged 37 teams per tournament over this last season, and that is planned for 15 tournaments next year. I don't know if you remember or not, but when we looked at the second and third quarter, sales tax, it's clear that these tournaments are having a positive impact on our community. Looked as if sales, gross sales, were up over $2 million comparing '13 to '14, just for that two-quarter period. So, we should see even more improvement in that next year, because we're doubling the amount of tournaments that we're going to see out here. So, it's been a positive influence. They also are looking for other improvements to the program for next year. The addition of fall ball, added fall adult softball, which was an improvement over what we had. They're looking at adding spring soccer, there's about 30 teams that have already expressed interest in that, and looking to create a more efficient and easy online registration process. The real benefit that most people have voiced is the ability for teams to be brought in together. You know, before, you really couldn't come and, as a coach, bring your whole team back and be able to do that. And now they have the ability to do that, and I think that's been very popular with the teams that are out there. So, this seems to be, from all aspects, a very positive move. We're able to offer more, our customers are more satisfied with the product that we're delivering, and within the next month, we should know for baseball, softball, what group, what league that we will be part of. I know they're working right now, looking at New Horizons, and there may have already been a vote of that group to determine whether we're moving into that group, or whether we'll be part of Little League. So we should know that within the next month or so. And either one of those would be huge for our participants here in the city. So, wanted to share that with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on that, or the use or the league agreement that there are ordinances on later on this evening.
I don't really have any questions about that, but I do think it's important to reiterate the amount of visitors to our city because of these tournaments. And on those weekends, you see people with out-of-town uniforms, and people in Walmart, and people at the restaurants. I mean, it's been pretty impressive to see those visitors.
It's very positive, and looking to build on that for next year. The next thing I have also involves Game Time Tournament Sports Management, is the renewal of the concession provider agreement. We did a one-year agreement, we wanted to evaluate and see how that went last year. I'm happy to say that it is the first time since the inception of concessions in the city that we actually did not go in the hole. We actually had $5,723 in profit, so that's significant for us, in that typically our loss was about that much from a season. So, even though it's not huge money, it is absolutely a move in the right direction.
So our decision was a good one in order to profit the city instead of lose money?
It was a good decision to profit the city rather than lose money. So, also, this concession provider agreement is later on in the agenda as an ordinance to be approved for signature.
Is that agreement the same as the...
It's the same agreement, just a new year period with the new LLC. All the terms remain the same.
Any other questions?
Okay. Next, I have for you is just a question in regard to the scheduling of a planning meeting for next year. We, at this time last year, were finalizing our strategic plan. We had met a couple of times, we have reviewed that strategic plan, and pretty much we're putting it into the final stages. I think it's important that annually we review and update that plan so that it stays fresh and current. And my question for you is, at what point do you want to do that? I think trying to get that in yet in December is really not feasible with the holidays, but I think January is a good time to look at that. We need to do it in time, so that as we start to work on our budget planning, anything that you add to that, we have the ability to get into the budget in the planning process. So, is everyone comfortable with January, and if so, how does January 19th look?
And I will make a comment there. I made a comment because that is a day that Tony, you would be off school.
That's correct. I mean, I'm still available for a meeting, I just wanted to make you aware that it's off.
Yeah, we know, the city's not off that day. I'm off that day, and you would be off. It's a full-day meeting, it's not like a two-hour meeting, it's a full-day gathering.
Okay, I didn't realize that it's a whole... It would totally depend on the snow days, because if we have a snow day between now and then, we lose it. Otherwise, yes.
Otherwise, I didn't think you'd be able to take... We'd have to do it on a Saturday.
Works for you?
Yes, it does. Nineteen thirty-five.
Okay.
Making arrangements made.
So, January 19th it is.
And what's the time?
I don't know yet.
Typically, it starts, didn't we start, Melody, at nine? Started at nine and ended about four o'clock? And we'll have to make sure that, you know, we have an ability to get a location and all that, but at that point, all the holidays will be over, so should be fairly easy. All right, so tentatively, we're January 19th, and we'll get that confirmed to get something out to you, so you all can get it on your calendar and firm it up. The next thing that I have is just a discussion related to the farmer's market. We've spoken with Mr. Claire, who has said that they had a very positive season. You have a little report, he says that they were open every Tuesday from May 20th to October 7th. They had 36 vendors between crafts and produce that participated in the market this past The produce vendors, his words, did so well that they had nothing left to sell by the end of the season, so he's recommending that they plant more this year to be able to accommodate all the customers. He believes it was very positive. They only had one complaint that he was aware of throughout the season, and it had to do with where one of their signs that they put out on the day of the market was located, and that was relocated, and they never had issues with that moving forward. So he would like our commitment to offer the pavilion to them again next season, and then he will move forward and get his market manager's license, and we can look forward to the farmer's market again for next season.
I think this was a really good success this year, you know, and letting them run it instead of the city staff run it was an excellent choice and decision the city made. So, do we need to make motions on that, or just how do we...
I'd like to have a motion, so that there's a record of that commitment to allow them, and then really, all he does is obtains a market manager's license. There's no agreement with them, but allowing the use of the pavilion.
Well, I would make the motion that we allow John Claire to continue as the market manager for the farmer's market for 2015.
I'll second that. Motion's been made by Alderman Casserly, second by Alderman Schluter. Did I get it right? Thank you. To award farmer's market, we knew their agreement, or not agreement, but allow them to...
To use the pavilion.
Any other discussion about it? Will call vote?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes. Motion passed, five to zero.
And then I have a couple of just updates. We are in need of two positions on the building board, so put your thinking hats on, and if you have some names that you'd like to suggest, get those to Melody or myself, and we'll pursue those. We also have an opening on the tourism commission, so...
What's the qualification on tourism?
It is from the business category. So, as long as there are businessperson in town and live within the city, that's all it takes to qualify for that. But we'll be bringing, next meeting, the renewals of those people who have agreed for those commissions to you next meeting. So, if you have some suggestions for people we might contact, we'd be happy to do so. And then Jessica asked me to find out how many of you are planning to be in the parade on Friday evening?
Five.
Five? Great. I will let...
I carried them.
Someone is in charge of twisting Alderman Ock's arm. Was that a voluntary thing from you? Alderman Casserly?
I'll twist his arm.
I will let her know. I know that Brad is, I don't know if it's a trailer, or if it's one of the city vehicles, but they're working on something to transport to.
And what time should we be at the parade for that?
I believe the parade starts at 5:30, so I believe you need to be there a little ahead of that. But I will check with her and make sure, and send you all an email if that's wrong, but I believe the parade starts at 5:30. That's all I have this evening, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for... Okay, moves on down to item number eight, Michelle, Economic Development.
Good evening, the first item I have for you is my monthly report. I see our chicken place has a sign on the wall. So that shouldn't take too long, no? They are doing just a few more things, they hope them to be open by 15th of this month. That's the date they're shooting for. J.C.'s Chicken, it is an individual chicken restaurant, it's not a franchise.
They do have a second place based on Jeff City, am I correct?
I'm sorry?
They do have a second, second location in Jeff City, am I correct?
I had not heard that.
I thought they had one in Washington.
I believe that, I know they're based on Jeff City, I don't know, Jeff City where they started. Anything about sidewalks?
And the second item I have for you is sidewalks. We opened bids for the construction of the sidewalks on South Highway 47 for our safe routes to school, and we would like to go with the low bidder, Cannon General Contractors.
I made a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Economic Development Director to accept a bid from Cannon General Contractors in the amount of $124,424.85.
And with the two additions or alternate bids, it'd be a total of $100,000. And with the two additions or alternate bids, it'd be a total of $159,994.15.
And if... We'll amend that motion so that we are accepting alternates one and two? Is that what you're suggesting, Michelle?
They're just...
Go ahead, Karen. I believe it needs to be approved contingent upon MoDOT's concurrence with that, which we've not received yet.
Okay.
The section of the sidewalk they were waiting on for MoDOT, so we're not going to finish it, it's MoDOT's.
We have to recommend them, but then and send it to MoDOT, and then we have to get contingency from MoDOT to move forward since it is a grant. We have to get their approval that, yes, that Cannon is a contractor who follows their guidelines and has done their training and all of that.
Okay. So, in your motion, do you want it to be for the $159,000 or the $124,000?
$159,000.
Okay. So, we'll amend that motion to be that the... Recommend the city accept alternates one and two, bring the total contract amount to $159,994.15 contingent upon MoDOT's concurrence.
And I'll second that motion. Motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Sluter, to award the contract or sidewalks to Cannon General Contractors for $159,994.15 with alternate one and two.
Michelle, is this the same Cannon as the Cannon builders for the houses?
That I'm not sure of.
I believe it is.
Any other questions or discussion?
Have they actually done sidewalks? I know that they do houses, but is this something that they normally do?
They have worked for MoDOT, I believe, in the past, and they are on MoDOT's pre-approved contractors list.
Okay, thanks.
And that is something that MoDOT will make sure of when they look at this as well.
Do you know what the timeframe is for this project?
I believe they are hoping to get started with everything in January pending weather.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call vote.
Alderman person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion pass five zero with one absent.
That is all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Item number nine. Gabriel Curry with the finance manager.
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month of November. The total amount is $285,641.44 that I'm requesting approval for.
Make a motion that we approve the accounts payable for $285,641.44.
Second. Motion by Alderman person Castorley, second by Alderman Dryer. I'll have those announced. Finished out.
To approve the accounts payable in the amount of $285,641.44.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call vote.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman person Castorley?
Yes.
Motion pass five zero with one absent.
The next item I have is the monthly report for October. Are there any questions about anything? Okay. My next item is the utility billing ACH module. The... This module will allow the customers to request for us to accept their payments. They would have to fill out a form, a one-time form, where we can do ACH similar to how payroll does direct deposit. You fill out a form one time, do a test, and then every month at the same time, we would collect those funds from their bank account. So, the accounting software company says this normally takes two months in order for this to come into motion, so I am requesting approval for this project with a total cost of $1,600.
Any questions?
This is going to be a great benefit for the citizens of this town. This is going to be a great thing.
Alderman, can you motion?
I can make it all. I make the motion that we approve the utility billing ACH module in the amount of $1,600.
I'll second that. Motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Sluter, to approve for... approving the utility billing ACH module at the amount of $1,600. Any questions? Roll call vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
The next item I have is an approval to purchase the utility billing e-bill module. This is for customers that would like to receive their water bills electronically via email, and this, again, will take two months for it to be completed, so I'm requesting approval for that, $1,600.
Again, a great thing for the city should, over time, reduce the expenses that would give people to actually take this up, so reducing postage and printing, so a benefit reducing the cost of the city. So, I would like to make the motion that we approve the purchase of the utility billing e-bill module.
Second. Motion by Alderman person Castorley, second by Alderman Dryer, to approve buying the utility e-bill modular for $1,600. Roll call vote.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
I think, just real quickly, there's nothing to vote, but I mean, the reason for an explanation is we're still going to be able to do the paper billing for maybe people that aren't wanting or trusting the electronic end, but I know people I've heard in speaking with Alderman Ox earlier, he agreed, he's heard the same thing. Certain people sometimes get their billing in late, so this is kind of a good thing for a lot of people because of the way the post office has changed up and sending stuff down to St. Louis. Sometimes it comes in a few days late instead of on time like it used to. It's very frustrating for some of the constituents out there in the city, so this may be a way to improve and help on that, so I'm glad we're taking that step.
How are we going to communicate these options to the citizens?
They can answer.
We put those on the utility bills that we're sending out every month. We have, you know, the comments section.
Before we move on to your next item, have we done with this topic? My computer was busy pulling up while we... And I was looking for an actual number when we were talking about your weekly monthly report, and for those people who can't see this information or have an ask for it, I think it's important to note that year-to-date in the fiscal year, we are above on sales tax by 14% in the city, which is a great showing of the things that we're doing in the community to generate revenue for the citizens. That's all. Thank you. You got one, right?
The employees of the city are adopting three families for Christmas. The plan is to provide Christmas dinner and Christmas presents for those families, so ways that we are trying to raise money and donations is the office staff here at City Hall can purchase jeans days other than like the Fridays that we already have, and then also the police staff are growing beards through the end of December.
Like ever.
And then also, public works and grounds are having a luncheon if their employees participate in the program, so we just wanted to let you guys know when you see some changes coming to visit us.
See some... I'm sorry to be here.
That's all I have.
Anything else for... Item number 10. Chief, on a shell.
The only thing I have this evening is just a brief discussion about the blood drive that the city will be hosting on December 23rd. After Mayor Dyer resigned, the department heads, after they kind of got over the initial shock, thought, you know, we need to do something and really give, first of all, everybody at the city an opportunity to honor his service, but then also everybody in the city to do the same thing, and this just kind of fell on the table. I think it's a great, a great way to honor him and his service. As it stands right this second, we have... There's 49 total slots for that day. It's going to run from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and we already have 55 or 57% of the slots filled, and that's with just the participation from city employees. So, that's better than I really expected, but everybody really kind of jumped on board and...
So, 1 to 6, there's only like 49?
Right.
Bed opportunities?
Yes. And if... The flyers went out today to the local businesses, so it'll be interesting to see how many responses I get from that. If it looks like we're going to exceed that 49, they'll put other technicians into the system. Yeah. So, anyway, we will be doing a LiveWire stint on Friday as well, and there's a couple of other presentations coming up to try to recruit folks, but this is shaping up to be a pretty good event.
And the parade start taking...
Right. Right.
Let me just say, I commend everybody here who worked on this, especially the chief. And thank you for taking the suggestion and opening up to a point where employees can be able to participate in this instead of trying to make a way to do it. I appreciate that, and I think everybody else will too. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Item 11, city court. No.
I provided for you, we have a contract from J&amp;M Displays for fireworks for 2015, and I gave you a list to show you what we got in 2014 for $10,000. I think it would end up being like an 18 to 20-minute show or something like that. So, for $15,000, they're going to do like a 26 to no more than 30-minute show. You're going to get 2,202 shell count, which is 1,284 more than what you had for the $10,000.
They shoot it up that same amount of time.
Well, we give it nice for five minutes. I need to find out from you guys, though, on the agreement, number two, the payment option, there's some different ways that they do it, how you guys wanted to take care of that. Funds tourism approved it, so being utilized by the tourism funds. One thing on here that they did talk about, because last year, we sent the check to them after the show, the Monday after the show, because using term tourism funds, we always wait till after everything goes through, and then we make the payment, and they said, you know, if we wanted to do that again this year, then we'll more than often do it. But they did give other options, just for yourself.
Three, 8% for...
You see any problem with either one of the payment plans?
I see the benefit of doing the April 24th and getting the 8% discount for, or bonus product, is what they're saying. I see no reason why we would not take advantage of that.
We'd be saving money more, right?
Well, I don't think you save money. If I understand this correctly, you get 8% bonus product, so you're just getting more for your money.
But there's no other issues that you...
I don't see any other issue with it, no.
The tourism... Obviously, they already discussed some issues.
Mm-hmm. They're fine.
They're good.
So, the 8%, you guys want...
Motion, no worries.
I don't think we need a motion. And the only other item that I have is to let you guys know the candidate filing starts on December 16th, doors open at 7:45, begins at 8:00, and candidate filing ends on January 20th, 2015. That's it.
Okay, it's number 12, bills to ordinance. Bill number 69-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 69-14.
Second. Motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Sluter, for first reading of bill number 69-14.
In ordinance authorizing the issuance of combined waterworks and sewerage system revenue bonds, series 2014, of the city of Montezary prescribing the form and details of the bonds and the covenants and agreements to provide with payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain actions and documents and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
I'll call for the second and final reading and approval for bill number 69-14. Second. Motion by Alderman Sluter, second by Alderman Dryer, for the second reading and passage of bill number 69-14.
In ordinance authorizing new issuance of combined waterworks and sewerage system revenue bonds, series 2014, of the city of Montezary prescribing the form and details of the bonds and the covenants and agreements to provide with payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain actions and documents and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
Roll call vote.
Alderman person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion pass five zero with one absent. Bill number 70-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 70-14.
I'll second that. Motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Sluter, for the first reading of bill number 70-14.
In ordinance authorizing the president of the board of Alderman to sign an addendum to the 2014 athletic complex use agreement from the city of Montezary and tournament sports management LLC.
I'll call for the second final reading and approval of bill number 70-14. Second. Motion by Alderman Sluter, second by Alderman Dryer, for the second final reading and passage of bill number 70-14.
In ordinance authorizing the president of the board of Alderman to sign an addendum to the 2014 athletic complex use agreement between the city of Montezary and tournament sports management LLC.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman person Castorley?
Yes.
Motion pass five zero with one absent. Bill number 71-14. Call for a first reading of bill number 71-14. Second. Motion by Alderman Dryer, second by Alderman Castorley, for the first reading of bill number 71-14.
In ordinance authorizing the president of the board of Alderman to sign an addendum to the recreational league management agreement between the city of Montezary and tournament sports management LLC.
Call for the second final reading and passage of bill number 71-14.
I'll second. Motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Sluter, for the second and final reading and passage of bill number 71-14.
In ordinance authorizing the president of the board of Alderman to sign an addendum to the recreational league management agreement between the city of Montezary and tournament sports management LLC.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion pass five zero with one absent. Bill number 72-14. Call for a first reading of bill number 72-14. I'll second that. Motion by Alderman Dryer, second by Alderman Sluter, for first reading of bill number 72-14.
In ordinance authorizing the president of the board of Alderman to sign a concession to writer agreement for 2015 between the city of Montezary and tournament sports management LLC.
I'll call for the second final reading of bill number 72-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sluter... Motion by Alderman Sluter, second by Alderman Holly, for the second final reading and passage of bill number seventy-two dash fourteen.
In ordinance authorizing the president of the board of Alderman to sign a concession provider agreement for two thousand and fifteen between the city of Morte Missouri and Tournament Sports Management LLC.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion pass five-zero with one absent. Bill number seventy-three dash fourteen.
I'd like to explain why we're doing this to the public. Bill number seventy-three dash fourteen is amending elective officer years so that we can hold a mayor election this year versus waiting for the regular term, which would have been in two thousand and sixteen. So, I'll call for the first reading of bill number seventy-three dash fourteen.
Second. Motion by Alderman person Castorley, second by Alderman Dryer, for the first reading of bill number seventy-three dash fourteen.
In ordinance amending section one-one-five-point-zero-one-zero, elective officers of the municipal code, the city of Morte Missouri, amending what years an election shall be held from mayor.
Call for the second final reading and passage of bill number seventy-three dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sluter, and second by Alderman Holly, for the second and final reading and passage of bill number seventy-three dash fourteen.
In ordinance amending section one-one-five-point-zero-one-zero, elective officers of the municipal code, the city of Morte Missouri, amending what years an election shall be held from mayor.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Motion pass five-zero with one absent.
Was I making too much noise?
Motion, you hear it?
I'll second that. Motion by Alderman Dryer, second by Alderman Sluter, to adjourn. Got a roll call vote? No? All payers say aye? Hoes? Motion pass.